I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, good morning. Next I have is the approval of today's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now is the approval of minutes of August 9th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 9th.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have no claims for this week, so I'll move to item number six, which is the indigent cremation policy. Lynn, you want to talk about it?
All right, we've had a policy in place for several years. The county, and each county gets a decision, you know, on how we handle indigent people who are deceased, and so some counties don't pay anything, some counties pay for traditional burials, but about, I think it's been about six years ago that Hardin County made the decision to go to just cremation. And then I've been talking with a couple of funeral homes recently, and it was kind of unclear in our policy, and it was basically just section five of the policy that I gave there. That was kind of unclear because our intent is always that if they have resources, they need to pay for the cremation. If they absolutely have no way to pay, then the county pays, but then the expectation was that the family or whatever wouldn't go and spend a lot of money on other things like a big service and flowers and all that other stuff. Well, funeral homes recently have been getting families who have a lot of expectations of things that are not intended to be included in this. So we've just basically clarified it to say, you know, we're last resort, the county pays for cremation, the funeral home is not expected to do anything else, they're not expected to, you know, set up viewing or a service, anything like that, and the only thing they would be able to, the family could purchase and earn under this for up to $250, because, you know, there have been a couple cases where families were upset, but I've never seen what the ashes come back in, but I think it's just like either a plastic box or something. And so this would allow them to purchase and earn, and I think the base earns are about $100 to $250. But otherwise, the county pays, and I also increased in here the amount that we would pay, we've been paying $1,100 for the last six years, but whenever we adopted that policy, and this would raise it to $1,300. And I did talk to the two funeral homes that do have done most of these, and they were fine with these changes, they appreciated the clarification. I think one of the funeral homes recently had some issues with a family, and it was actually through VA, but kind of policy and policy, and I think the family, you know, took some things to the state level, and it caused a lot of problems. And so I think this clarification would help in those situations too, that they're very clear that they're only paying for the case, have the body cremated, and if you want to have a service, you, we've had families that do their own thing, they go to a park, or they can work with a church, or sometimes a minister will do it for free if they know they don't have anything. So they can still do that, but it's just that we don't expect the funeral home to plan a service and all that other stuff.
Yeah, I think this will give some clarification, and everything's laid out up front, and I know there's a line between human dignity and, you know, what the responsibility of the county is, and so I think this meets in the middle and puts the funeral homes, gives them the knowledge and what the expectations are, so I, good work. Because I got one of those phone calls from the family here in the county, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes, and I'll make a motion to approve the indigent cremation policy.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is an agreement for purchase of vacuums. And I had Rick draw this up. When we went from hiring a service to hiring a employee in the county, the equipment that's currently being used is owned by GNC Enterprises. He's given us a price sheet as to the dollar amounts that he would like to ask, it's up to you. He's given the cost of a new one when they were purchased, and it's up to us whether we want to accept that. I don't feel it's right for Jody to buy his own equipment as property manager.
All right, great. I, with the list that he provided and what he paid for them and what he's asking now the county to purchase them, I, you're not going to be able to go out and buy new vacuums for what he's asking, and I understand they're still in good condition and whatever, so I'm, I'm fine with the agreement for purchase. I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for purchase for the, for the item, for the vacuums listed.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? For example, when he purchased one of these, it was $536, he's asking $75. Another one was $460, he's asking $250. The third one was $600, he is asking $200, for a total of $525.
I think it's very fair.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is item number eight, which is abatements for 2016 values. There's 35 of them, if you want to read them off separately, but.
I'll make a motion to approve the abatements for the 2016 values as provided.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Most of those are change in tillable versus pasture. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is a receipt of animal feeding operation construction permit at Bart Halverson Site, Section 29 of Providence Township. This is, this is one where they're adding a building onto an existing site.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the animal feeding operation construction permit for the Bart Halverson Site, located in Section 29 of Providence Township.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Julie? The total will be 3,745.
That includes what was?
It adds 1,250, Julie.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have a set time and date for the public hearing on the animal feeding operation construction permit, Bart Halverson Site, Section 29 of Providence Township. The last date we can do this would be September 6th.
I'd make a motion to set the hearing for August 30th at 10:10 a.m. for the Bart Halverson Site, Section 29 of Providence Township, in the large conference room at the Hardin County Courthouse.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? What date did you have set?
The 30th.
August 30th. I was just wondering about these, then people can look at the application thing in the auditoriums.
Examination of the file will be here, yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, item 11, discussion on salaries and job study. We talked with Groof on Thursday. I got no recommendation to put on the floor if you guys would like to throw something out there as to what we want to do.
I just had a few comments, so, you know, in recent months, we've had time to speak with department heads, employees, elected officials, and most importantly, taxpayers. I've been able to have discussions with Paul, our human resources manager, and he's provided the data and legal insight in regards to the job study that was initiated a few years ago. So within the last week, I personally asked for input from my constituents, and so I got some good feedback, and I just want to get that out in the public as to what the public's comments and concerns that I received were. So, one of them was the economy in terms of agriculture is weak right now, and this may not be the time to implement wage increases. Another comment was what are the employee contributions? You know, the public has a question of what employees are contributing to their own benefits, and, and so that was one concern. Why are the county employees not paying more of their fair share? Do county employees see their entire benefit package in terms of dollars and cents? Do county employees, elected officials, and others see the discrepancy between private sector and government salaries and benefits? Has a county looked at a cafeteria plan? Have we looked at farm land values and commodity prices and correlated those to the adjusted salaries? Can Hardin County residents buy into the same plan? And lastly, the most common question was how will this impact my taxes? So I think that there, these are very valid questions. I'm comfortable saying that the variables are difficult to factor, but I know there are things that I can work on with this board, with the county employees and taxpayers to make sure that the entire system is equitable and fiscally solvent while bringing personal accountability to the forefront. And so it seems that, you know, the public is looking for people to take, you know, a lead by government in, you know, from everything, from salaries to benefits, and, and so it's concerning to hear that, you know, there is a concern of is this the right time to pass anything, and if we do, can the benefits, can people take ownership for those more? So I just wanted to share those and get those out in the public.
I agree, I think they're all valid points. And I do want to, I mean, one of the things I kind of campaigned on was getting salaries where they need to be, but also employees paying more of the benefits, so, which would affect every one of us. So, I mean, I do think we need to proceed on something, but I don't know that, I think it's going to take a couple of more meetings, work sessions possibly with Paul in order to come to, to a consensus on this, and come up with something that we think. And it may end up being just kind of an equal swap. I mean, maybe you'll get more in pay, but you're going to be paying that much more in benefits. I don't know how it's going to affect everyone differently, so it's hard to say, it's not going to be an across-the-board thing, so, and I just don't feel comfortable making any decisions right now.
At, at this time, through the budget hearings, we've approved a 1% raise. Is it okay if I threw that on next week's agenda to approve the 1% raise, and we can still work on the rest of it as we go along?
Just the straight across the board? Is that what you're?
Yes.
You're the chairperson, if you want to.
I can throw it on, but.
Right, I think we can have a, a public discussion about it, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Julie?
People like in conservation and some other departments that have been shown by this job study that are, you know, where our department is grossed out of pay, what's the plan? Talking about the swap between pay and benefits, you know, about the last three years, my take on, paychecks have been essentially the same because insurance costs have risen with what they offset with little increases in salary received, so just we're all wanting to know what's, you know, for our future planning, what's going to happen here.
My feeling on that is those definitely need to be brought up. That, that needs to be part of the, the whole plan. If, if, I mean, when Lance mentioned the 1%, if we give that 1%, I'm still, I would still want to bring the underpaid people up to at least, to get them into their bracket at least. It's my opinion.
I, I'm, I'm on the same page. I would like to see the, the percentage increase, I'd like to see people bumped up to where they need to be, but I also, at the same time, want to educate every Hardin County employee on what their salary and benefits are truly worth.
Mm-hmm. And. I think that needs to be an annual thing.
Yeah, and, and right now, I believe that a lot of people take for granted what the insurance is, and we have the comparable, we have the comparables now for, you know, we asked for the wages and benefits in that salary study, we have all that now, and last week when we talked with Paul, I think a lot of county employees would be surprised on how much the county contributes to the insurance and to vision and dental, so, Julie?
I would like a date certain when you're going to deal with the salary discrepancy for the conservation commission part. You know, you have the facts on that, deal with it, because it feels like you're just, to many people who you actually speak with, actually feel that they're purposely getting, getting squeezed, and it's, I would like a date certain for you to deal with that. And I'm going to have to say, I do not believe that county employees take their insurance and benefits for granted. They are aware of what they are doing, they know the value, and I don't think that, that we as citizens should lower the standards of pay for people who work and do their jobs. Why, what's the standard? Are we, is our standard going to be keeping lowering people's income because, well, somebody else gets paid more, so I don't think that's fair. But at the forefront, we need to quit squeezing conservation, and you need to tell them you're going to increase their salaries to what they should be. We can deal with the other stuff. That needs to be dealt with soon.
I would actually like to see, we've got on there now discussion on salaries and job study, I would, rather than just seeing the 1% increase on the agenda, I'd rather have just salaries and job study put on so that we can take action on whatever, whether it's the 1%, whether it's bringing that up. I mean, I'm ready to do that at any time.
Yeah.
However, but I.
Set their salaries to what they should be, what they put around, deal with the other stuff first. This is more urgent.
Would you say conservation's more important than the sanitary, and then? She's underpaid as well.
Then she needs to be brought up.
Okay.
Those who are underpaid, and that's proven, need to be brought up.
Right.
And you can deal with these other things as you wish, but you need to bring those up.
But I do disagree on one thing, Julie. I think even some of the elected officials were surprised, and you can speak up if you want, but when, when Paul gave us the, the study results of what other counties spend, or what other county employees spend in other counties towards our insurance versus what ours spend, and what the total costs are and stuff, I think even some of our elected officials were surprised. I thought we were probably low, but I think others were even surprised at how low we are as far as what make, of what our county employees share for their health insurance benefits, and how many days of vacation they get, how many days of sick leave they get. They're all much better in Hardin County than they are in other counties. And so I do, I do think that they're really not aware of what other counties do and give for those other benefits, so.
Well, then let's, let's set the standard, let's do that, I think.
Lot of information. We're comparing to a job study we haven't implemented yet. One of the, one of the factors is do we implement the job study, or do we do the wage increase? They're two separate things, you can only do one or the other. The 1% increase is not part of the job study, of the implementation of the job study. Which one are we doing? This is just statements. But one thing I would like to do is meet with the conservation board, I talked to you about that three weeks ago at some time, meet with your board as well, and go over some of these with them so that we know where we can go. I, I want to work with your board, with the director, our board, all in one place. We talked, I don't know, three or four months ago at least, long before this came out, when you were talking about the underpaid positions, and I said, wait for the study to come out, the study's come out, it's proven they're underpaid, let's, let's work on this.
Well, then we need to set a date.
But that.
We can set a special meeting anytime.
So I would like to do that, so that we can work with your board as well.
My board's ready to get the two as well.
Yep. But in the meantime, we could still go ahead, for everybody else that isn't conservation, still make a movement, I feel, and look at those other ones that are underpaid as well that did not reach the job study. But we're comparing to a job study that has not been implemented yet.
There's a lot of options that we would have in order to implement. I don't, I don't see being, or doing one or the other, I think there's means to do both, if that's what's decided. I think, I think just putting it on again next week, and maybe we can get set some.
We're not here next week.
Oh, that's right, in two weeks. But hopefully, we would be able to meet with conservation here soon. I think maybe we can talk to you, Wes.
I think I can pull a meeting together.
And I do believe it should be retroactive to July 1st.
Absolutely.
Yes. I think that's something we've all said, so.
Put it on for the 30th? And do you think that your board can meet with us prior to the 30th?
Yes, I'm sure, I can, I don't want to get them all, but I'll have it picked up for the board.
Yep, good. Okay, we'll plan on that. And I'm ready to make a decision on the 30th, one way or the other.
From there, I have utility permits.
I'll make a motion to approve permit 8-16-17. It's a motion to approve the Hardin County utility permit, application by Windstream Iowa Communications for the purpose boring from 16595 D Avenue, north around the west side of the bridge to the first power pole, where Windstream will be setting a new pedestal and digging out the shoulder of D Avenue to make a buried splice on existing cable located in Sections 4 and 5 of Buckeye Township.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our engineer is not here today, they're working on the Honey Creek Road right now, doing some resurfacing out there. You want to know about that, and from there, go to other business.
What's the, what's the deal with the road counters, you're out on all the gravel roads?
Drive over them as much as you can.
I was going to say, I've been getting questions, what, what do they determine for those, where do they use that data from?
That's a Darryl question, I'm assuming they're seeing how much traffic's actually in this area. It might, it might regulate the amount of, it, I'm assuming that they're doing counts of how much traffic is going on, and it regulates the amount of money that the DOT sends to our county, if I recall, but that's more of a question for the engineer.
That's the thing. I hope you run back and forth.
Yep.
A wheel on a stick.
I'll have to get a list of where those are.
They're all over.
They're all over the place right now.
They're in towns as well.
Yeah.
Yep. Any other business?
Do you have anything else?
Yes.
Big barns, are they published, or somebody puts a request in to know if you want to disagree with it or not?
Yeah, the publish will be like this.
And where would you find that?
If they go in the papers, for sure.
The local newspaper has it?
Yes, the three local newspapers will, or.
The next section, I've never seen.
Public notices.
In the public notices, it's the, the real fine print type stuff. The same thing as like board minutes and those kinds of things.
You mean the ones you can't read?
Well, yes, but for the number of publications we have to pay for every year for the things we're required to submit, that's about all we can afford to do, which is the same thing that city councils and, and school boards, I mean, they're all, the legal notices are printed like that, yeah, so you, you need to buy a magnifying glass.
A big, a big question. They put that pig barn up at High Lake, they will place all kinds of bits over, it's a different issue about it. Does anybody ever question a permit of a pig barn being built? Does anybody ever do it, and say anything? I think they're going to build one by our house, I found out, because they think it was a severe measure for here with the pig barn. But I also noticed they find a little grass around it, which is going to be the second one decided. I'm going to like it to present a petition, man, or? I just, I don't, my first suspicion was when they actually mowed it up, the pig barn was. Which they're supposed to do, I believe, anyway.
They did what?
To mow around.
Oh.
They rarely mow the entire lot, just a small portion of it. Well, recently, they've been mowing the entire lot, but until that point, there were all kinds of thistles blooming and blowing everywhere.
We thought of why they mowed it, because now they're planning to build a second pig barn.
They surveyed and measured.
Farmland.
The first one is just over 1,600 feet north of our house. It creates a very pleasant environment, and I do mean that facetious. But now they're going to build another one. How can we appeal that? How can we?
The state sets the regulations.
Which says the county board of supervisors can appeal.
And if we appeal it, if it meets the matrix or the qualifications, we can appeal it, it will go to the state, the DNR will go out, and they can make the measurements as well. And when they make the measurements, and it, and it would still pass, we're appealing something that passed, right? That's what you're asking.
I don't know, first of all, we had to go and ensure that, and I don't know how to find out if it submitted appropriate matters.
Some of those never even come to, if they're a smaller enough site, we don't even see them.
This one will be another 2,499 building.
So then, yes, that should be through the matrix.
But the thing is, that matrix is ridiculous.
And that's where the state.
It allows points for things that these people are going to want anyway, to be able to turn a truck around on the lot.
Yeah.
That is little and no importance to anybody but them.
The matrix, for changes to be made in the matrix, you're going to need to contact your legislators.
Oh, I have, I started that, same time I started contacting you guys.
Which I've talked to them about it also.
But a 15-year-old matrix, considering how few there were back then in this state, and how many there are now.
I agree.
I mean, okay, I understand farmers want those pig barns, and I won't, I won't give them the respect to call them cattle's. They are pig barns. And I understand they want to use the manure to spread in their fields, and it's important to them. Of course, I think they also need to review the rules of spreading it, because they're spreading it within 200 feet of our house, which is not allowed. But they need to update that matrix. Like I said, nobody cares but the owner of the, of the property if they can turn, turn a truck around. That's important to them. But when it's 1,600 feet from your house, it's bad. There are times you can't go outside except to hold your breath and run to your vehicle because it's that bad. There are things they can add so that it doesn't smell that bad. And I'm talking in general, not just our place. And I'm talking in general, not just our place, in general, because it seems to me the smell of these things has been some of the biggest complaints.
And flies.
For who do you call if somebody's violating something? Do you think...
DNR.
DNR.
The DNR. DNR.
I'll be contacting them because they did violate.
They, they would be the enforcer of...
Yeah. They are the enforcer.
Environmental division too.
I couldn't tell you what division it was.
It's the environmental division.
I'd like to talk to you afterwards. You seem, you know more than I do. But, but it occurs to me that if the board supervisors of all these counties also step in and say, hey, you know, our constituents are telling us we need to do something. Because for the most part, if one or two people call and whine and complain, nobody's going to do anything. We need the backing of our county government.
We, we passed a resolution...
I read that resolution.
And, you know, we can't go down and we don't have a vote at the state house. We don't, we can't push anything through the committee. I mean, it gets brought up to Representative Dio, Representative Grassley, and Senator Dix, and we get looked at like, you know, we'll do it on our own sweet time. They'll say, what do you want us to do? Regulate DHS and adoptive homes? Or do you want us to regulate? You know, we want them to do all of it, just do their job.
Exactly.
So, you know, the...
But would you not agree?
We, we already did.
1,600 feet is ridiculous.
I, I agree that they need to update the matrix. Every, every rule needs to be looked at and addressed and updated. Times have changed, technology's changed, health considerations and data has changed. So yeah, that's what we pressed for in the resolution, and believe me, I've had the, the conversation with all three representatives, and none of them will give me a firm commitment that they're going, that they're going to do anything.
You're right.
Then maybe we need to change our representatives.
Absol, absolutely. And, you know, your voice is the strongest at the poll. Yes, Julie?
If there are related violations that perhaps violate our code of ordinances that as a nuisance, can we, you know, report them to a sanitation person? If one felt that, I don't know.
I think that you could report them, and then I believe she could pass them on to the, you know, up the chain to, you know, the applicable agency or enforcement bureau. I think, yeah, if somebody was spreading manure 200 feet from my house and that was against the rule, I would take a picture and report it to whomever, document it, and get the ball rolling. Just like if you see a suspected drunk driver, somebody driving recklessly, you can call the sheriff's office, give them a vehicle description, you know, where you're at, the who, what, where, when, why, and how, and, and let the officials make that determination.
The weed issue you brought up could go to the weed commissioner as well. Megan's sitting right here. She, she would handle those weed issues. The weed issue?
Oh, the, for the thistles?
If it, if it's an noxious weed.
It's a beautiful color, until it all turns white and blue away.
Any other business?
I have asked though, and I, if you're the one I talked to about the weeds?
Yeah, I would be the one.
I'd like to get your names and phone numbers, please. I mean, when we bought that property, we were talked to by our neighbors regarding thistles. We go in our pasture with, he went this morning with a shovel and a wagon for the persistent ones, to dig them up so our neighbors won't be affected.
Yeah, that would go through the weed commissioner.
It makes you wonder, why am I bothering?
And then there's procedures that she'll use to handle it as well.
I just wanted to let you know why we brought the issue on. We're doing our best. Obviously, not all, all people are.
Any other business? Hearing none, I can ask for adjournment.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for adjournment.